Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our October 24th, 2017 Tiverton School Committee meeting. Open forum. We have Amy Mullen signed up. So Mrs. Mullen, just before you begin, you says you're Amy Mullen for Liz Cottrell?
Yes.
Is it on now?
It is not.
Liz could not be here tonight. She had a medical issue come up, so she wasn't able to be here. So she asked me if I would read something on her behalf.
Okay.
Okay.
That may be just something we need to address in the policy in the future. I know it's up for review, but go ahead.
Policy number 222 states legislation of policies are the most important function of a school board. With that in mind, the hiring policy as it stands now needs to be rewritten by the school committee because we are seeing a vast difference between what is submitted to the superintendent and what actually happens. And only one person on the school board is questioning this. The recent hiring committee that Mr. Ashley says was not asked for by Mr. Rerick, so therefore it didn't count, was obviously a waste of time. Three parents and six school employees each devoted eight to nine hours of their time to something that had already been decided since two days after the last interview. Students already knew who had been hired.
Mrs. Mullen, are you not venturing into the area of discussion of personnel?
You tell me.
I feel you are.
Okay. Well-
I think probably you might want to redact anything that refers specifically to any given search?
Sure.
Or any, certainly any person or personnel by name.
When a group of nine people disagree with the one who has the last say, and it has happened more than in one instance, something is wrong. We cannot ignore what is going on any longer, and I'm hoping the Tiverton School Committee will finally act on fixing the hiring policy. Or we will have reached our goal of policy number 213 and have just inadequate education for this community when we could have so much better. Please revisit the hiring policy and make it more of a group decision rather than giving all the power to one person.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, no, I have something to say. I'm on there too!
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you're on there on your own behalf.
So what I wanted to say was, last week and the week before, I had the privilege of filling in as the dean of students at the high school. And I just want to say how impressed I am with our high school student body. As the dean of students, I had to deal mostly with discipline issues. And there were discipline issues, but the student body as a whole really struck me as an accepting group of students, a welcoming group of students, and a pretty well behaved group of students. And I know that is something that is fostered from the elementary level through the middle school to the high school from the teachers. And what I saw were teachers who aren't unruly but are passionate about what they do and care about the students deeply. And it was a privilege for me to be able to be at the high school and see what goes on up there. And I just want to say again, we have some fabulous kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Rerick?
Yes, resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, resignation, lunch recess aid at Ranger School, Melissa DeSantis appointments, lunch recess aid Ranger School, Aaron Thompson.
Okay. Any correspondence? Okay. Do we want to move up Spotlight on Success?
We have like a couple things before.
Okay, alright.
If you want, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to have a motion to move up item 8B.
I'll make a motion to move up 8B. Second.
All those in favor? Okay, Spotlight on Success, Mr. Rerick?
Yes, the committee's aware of this, but I don't think members of the audience are or who might be viewing this on TV. But Fort Barton was identified once again as a commended school. It's one of 28 schools in the state of Rhode Island for their student performance on all the indicators that RIDE uses to measure the successfulness of a school. And it's the fifth year in a row, and I believe Fort Barton, and I believe it's Colt Elementary in Bristol, are the only two schools that have been named five years in a row for a commended school. So I want to congratulate Mrs. Wardell and her staff and their parents and the students at Fort Barton for another job well done.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Ms. Riley?
So we have some exciting things happening at Pettasett School this year. We've been researching best practices and ways to support our students, both all mentally, physically, as well as academically. So to do this, Pettasett has chosen two initiative ways to encourage lifelong learners. First, many of our teachers have transformed their classrooms with flexible seating. Research has found many benefits of flexible seating, which includes working calories, using excess energy, improving their metabolism, increasing motivation and engagement, creating a better oxygen flow to the brain, and improving core strength and overall posture. These short bursts of physical activity have been linked to higher academic performance, better health, and improved behaviors. And they're all positive outcomes that we're starting to see at Pettasett as the classrooms evolve with this flexible seating. The flexible seating includes anything from balance balls, ergo seating, we have lounge chairs, we have beach chairs, we have gigantic pillows that the kids are sitting on. Desks have been lowered, they've been raised, so that kids can stand, sit, kneel, whatever way they're comfortable to fit their learning style. And the kids have been so engaged in their learning, it's quite impressive to see. So please feel free to stop by and see that at any time. The second practice that we've been implementing and testing out that we've, a couple of teachers, Mrs. Kreisner and Mrs. Simmons and I, have been researching for a couple of years within their homework. Many researchers have found that the homework at elementary level does not contribute to academic achievement. At our school, Mrs. Kreisner, Mrs. Simmons, and I have been researching the topic for a couple of years and decided to implement it this year, and many other teachers jumped on board with them. Since we have started, we have seen a decrease in set distress and social emotional concerns. Students have also fall cup reading to do each night, but the traditional homework isn't there. Instead, what we do is if the child needs extra support or extra practice, they'll get something that goes home stamped that says homework, and that is a communication tool that the parents know that the child is working on it and needs a little extra help from them at home. The teachers have seen that the work is coming back without any issues. Parents are stating that there's less stress and crying at home. And they've just, a lot of positive feedback. They're raving about how nice it is just to be able to sit, have a family dinner, and then read a nice book with their child without the stress of the assignments. And teachers have found that their students are reading more and have no complaints when the assignment needs to go home. So far, it's been a positive change at Pettasett. Thanks for allowing me to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, I was visiting Pettasett the other day, and I saw the flexible seating. And it's a lot different than what we're used to. I probably considered a traditional classroom. But all the classrooms that I visited, all the students were engaged and on task, and they were all doing their assignments, but in their different areas and depending on where they wanted to sit or be seated or how they were grouped. It was interesting and exciting to see. The kids were really excited about it.
And Ms. Riley, did I hear that you had come with a special funding source for that seating?
Our PTO did a color run last year and raised well over $8,000 with the color run, which gave us 5,000-plus profit that we made that was given to the school. And that was solely designated for the flexible seating. And so then the PTO, the teachers, asked for items that they felt that they wanted to implement, and then the PTO ordered it.
It's fantastic.
It's amazing.
Bless crying at home sounds lovely. Mr. Ashley?
Yes. Last Thursday, we hosted our annual college and career fair, where over 100 colleges, universities, career partners visited Tiverton High School and packed the gymnasium to allow students and families from not only Tiverton, but area towns to come and speak with representatives directly from those associated colleges, universities, and career partners, who just learn more about the application process, the criteria, and also just see what other options. Oftentimes, students are very surprised at how many different colleges and universities and options there are that are available. And I do want to just stress that this was a truly community-based effort. So we had teachers from Tiverton High School, we had students from Tiverton High School, we had parents, we had community workers, we had lots of businesses. Especially our guidance team that really took the lead to organize this over many months. They were planning this last spring. We were very pleased to host the event.
Dr. Locken?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ashley. In Guidance and Kelly Leveque, it was an amazing event. And the food in here for everybody. And what I like is college and career, you heard him say. We used to have college fair now, and then in the spring, we had more of the carpentry technology, all that. So we're going to combine them. We have a great big commons area that we could fill up because we know there's a lot of different pathways for kids. And that's what we want to do next year. I talked to Mr. Ashley, and we're going to try to do that. And we'll get in touch with the workforce, Governor's Workforce Board and get them here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Do I want to move up 8C as well? 8C.
What is 8C?
I'll make a motion to move up 8C.
Second.
I think I see him in the audience.
All those in favor? Okay, it's a request of former Gender Sexuality Alliance Club at the middle school.
Yes, the request, and I believe the students here this evening, it's a request as part of our student, the student's senior project for graduation this June.
Diane, just hit your button.
Does it what? Okay. Hi, my name is Diana. I'm a senior here at the Tiverton High School. And as you know, we have a senior project. So for my senior project, I would like to bring a GSA down to the middle school. We already have one up here, and I'm also the president of it. And recently, we, last year, we just changed the name to Gender Sexuality Alliance because Gay Straight Alliance is what it usually stands for. But Gender Sexuality Alliance, that opens up that minority of the LGBT plus community. So we decided to change it to that. I actually have a, I guess you'd call it data. It's a packet that I found online. It's the GLSEN. And it goes around, and it gives you information about schools that benefit with GSAs and schools that don't benefit with GSAs. It shows that students with GSAs are less likely to hear homophobic remarks and LGBT students who attend school, LGBT students who attend schools with GSAs feel quite safer with them involved. So also, I already have a mentor, Mrs. Perkins. She's the school psychologist down at the middle school. I've already had teachers come up to me and ask to be advisors for it and help me out. So I am requesting approval to get a GSA down at the middle school.
Any questions from any members of the committee?
I would like to make a motion to approve that proposal.
Your mic's on.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the program down at the middle school. Diane's senior project.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I do have some questions.
Okay.
Diane, I give you a lot of credit for coming before us today.
Thanks. This is really nerve wracking. I'm sweating.
I'm sitting here and I still get air.
I'm really sweating.
No, I understand. Yeah, it's all good now. I'm going to be honest with you. I have some concerns. Okay. I, first and foremost, is the age group at the middle school to which you'd be targeting.
I've actually asked a couple of people this question. In most towns, 5th grade is still considered an elementary level, so I would like to keep them out because they are still babies, I guess. We talked about 6th, 7th, and 8th, but still the maturity level. So I was talking, I wanted to do 7th and 8th, but I also don't want to exclude the underclassmen, I guess you call them. That's what I call them. But I was considering 7th, 8th. But I could do 6th, but it's how you guys feel.
Secondly, as a parent, remembering where my child was maturity-wise while in middle school. I'm not so sure he would have been prepared for discussions of topics such as this. And my concern is that there may be parents who have issues with a club such as this at the middle school level. Have the parents been asked of basically all of the middle school how they feel about something like this?
Well, it'd be a club open to all students, so they'd show up as they're welcome. So if you don't want to show up, you don't have to. And it would, it would help the community as a whole, but it's not focusing on the parents. It's focusing on the student's safety, mental health, academic achievement, coming up to the high school.
Would the parents be required to approve their participation?
I don't see why they'd have to. That's just my standpoint. And also, some parents may not even agree to it when their kids still struggle with these ideas or they're still battling these thoughts that makes them feel invalid while their parents still don't. I've had my own struggles, so sometimes parents aren't always open to the idea of their children growing.
I do recognize that. I just, my overall concern is the grade level between 5 and 8, all in one building. I sincerely, I know you didn't bring the psychologist with you as your mentor today, and thank you, Mrs. McCarthy, for coming. I would probably have asked her a couple of questions as well. I'm very hesitant to stand behind this, to be honest.
Can I address one thing about that? And I'm, this is my second year as a GSA advisor. So one thing, I would say the biggest part of the GSA is just a place for the kids to come. It's a safe place to be themselves. I do have some students that do come whose parents are not aware of their orientation. And so, you know, it's just a place for them to feel safe and be themselves. Yet, I'm trying to think of how I can possibly let you know that, you know, there isn't anything that we're like going out and telling everybody, "You need to come in. You need to be a part of this," you know.
How did you, how are you going to solicit, I guess, members? I don't remember how we did it at the high school either.
Here, we just, we just put up signs. We have word of mouth, like signs. Like when we have the 9th grade, "We're here for the 9th grade night." We had a table. We had a club fair Thursday.
So similar, you're thinking of it?
Yeah. Yeah, I would think so. Is that what you've discussed?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, so it's just a nice, safe place for the kids to be. And we have had quite a few new members. Our freshmen and sophomores that we have make up the majority of our thing. Okay?
Being a senior and attending the GSA since my freshman year, I've come to it again, on and off again, but the last two years, it's grown. And I've had students come up to me and say that if I had a GSA in middle school, it would have helped me. I agree. If I had a GSA in middle school to just know that I was safe and I was valid and I wasn't, I wasn't weird, it would have been much better. So.
So you're, if we, because of the concern with just maturity level at the middle school, you would be okay, Diana, just doing 7th and 8th?
I'm sorry, asking. I'm sorry, I got distracted.
That's okay. I said, so if the concern is, you know, just the younger maturity issue of say a 5th and a 6th, you would be okay, at least initially, just saying, well, let's stick with 7th and 8th and see how that goes?
Yes. Yeah. When I thought about the ideas and what I would do with the kids and how I would talk to them and just run the club type of thing, there'd be a different way. I'd be talking to 8th graders and 5th graders, and I wouldn't want them to see that or be shunned by it only because of the maturity level that is there and that they don't have much experience, even though a few years. But still, I would definitely be okay with just doing 7th and 8th. Just having it there would be nice.
This would be your senior project, so clearly, come June, see ya. What would be your plan for the club at that point?
I've talked to the students up here to actually, one of them or two of them, take it on after me and actually just start doing it, just to do it, just to help them out. I don't know what would be my hopes. I mean, I would hope that kids would join and they'd benefit from it, and the school would actually really show improvement signs of it. But then again, I don't really, this is all happening very quickly. So.
And Mrs. Perkins is always at the, like, you always have your adult advisor at all of the meetings, correct? Like, you're at all of the high schools.
I'll just, again, at the high school, I think it's a great idea. It's a great club.
There have been quite a few requests from middle school students asking for that.
But as a parent, I just can't go with it. I would want to see, as a parent, if I found out that my 7th grade child was participating in a club without my knowledge, such as this, I would be very disappointed. And I would, I would have him taken out. I think that the right of parents for children at that age really has to be taken into consideration. We can't ask our kids to pray in class, and I don't, and I wouldn't presume ever to. But I also wouldn't ask our kids to freely join a club that could, let's face it, could potentially raise some controversy without parental-
But could also save their lives.
Without parental knowledge and approval.
It could also save their lives. As a student who couldn't stand to see themselves in the mirror at one point, it would be, I would love to have somebody that would come up here and be a role model to me and show me that I can do it, that I can make it to my senior year, that I can start this club for kids. You know what I told myself right before I came up here? I was nervous. And I was like, you know what? How many kids are you going to help? I understand as a parent, but as a child who had parents who weren't open to the idea at first, it's heartbreaking. And it could potentially, your child, how much do you really know about your kid's lives? How much do they keep from you? How much do you know when they actually need help? How much do you know when their friend group is targeting them? How much do you know when they're a target in school? Because honestly, in our generation, our kids aren't open with us. Our kids are in our electronics, our social medias, our cell phones. We're into what other people think about us. And how much, as a high schooler, I know I don't tell my parents anything. I don't talk to them, really. We have different schedules. We have different things to do. We have different lives at this point. I'm growing up. And as these kids in our generations, they grow up so fast now. And they're open to such new things. And whether or not that they have it in school, they see it on the news. They see it on social media. They see it in laws. It's everywhere. So whether you try to keep it out of the school or not, whether you don't want your kid to see it or not, they're going to be open to it. And I guess that's all I have to say about it.
I get- I certainly, I mean, I understand the concern as a, definitely as a parent. And we don't want to ever override especially, and again, we're differentiating high school. High school kids are different. This is middle school. A little bit more protective of them. But I would be, certainly if we restrict it to 7th and 8th, and where we have the school psychologist that's there to guide, I think, you know, I think it would be certainly controlled enough. And, you know, if, at the end of the day, if parents find out and want their child to leave, they will. But at least it's sort of a safe, like, because if, like you said, it's already being discussed. It's already out there. Because we have a psychologist who's sort of guiding it, so it's a little bit safer place to have those discussions. And I guess if we limit it to 7th and 8th, if I don't know how other people think about that, I could see definitely going ahead.
So my mentor, she, she's only there three days a week, and she has kids, so she cannot stay after school. So I've already had Ms. Hallman contact me, and Edith has talked to me. And if I talk to Edith, we could probably make out a time, and she could probably come because she's also down at the middle school.
For all of our classes, you have to have an advisor. I'm a klump.
Yeah, no, we do. So Ms. Hallman offered to do that. But if you like somebody with a more higher degree in it, I could talk to Edith, and maybe she would be willing to also team up with Ms. Hallman to do it.
Yeah, because I think, for me anyway, it's, you know, because it is, it's a topic. They're very young. It's an important topic. I like that, even if Mrs. Perkins can work with Mrs. Hallman, whoever it is, to make sure that, you know, you're sort of monitoring what's, what and how things are being discussed and just, which I'm sure, you know, in a way that's going to be productive. But I think, I at least would like to see the age group limited. I don't know what anyone else thinks.
Dr. Locken?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
I agree with Mrs. Polish. I had six children. Now I have seven grandchildren, and I'm going, yikes. We were at Tiverton Prevention, talking about when we should talk about different things, and I said, "We have to start moving it down." That's just the way it is. And they ask me questions. They talk to me more than they talk to their parents. And it's, it's very important. 7th and 8th, I think is very good for that. Like you said, you don't want to school anyone, but I think that's a higher level of maturity. But I'm noticing that. Just because you said of the internet and their phones and everything, they're into things that they just would have never been before. And we have to address them and keep everyone safe.
Thank you. And certainly, you know, if it continues beyond this year, sort of 7, 8 is your starting point, and you feel comfortable and you find at the middle school that 6 is a good add-on, you can.
Yeah.
But I think for, at least for the first year, 7, 8 seems like a good.
Yeah. That's what I said when I first had the idea.
Is there any way where we could incorporate a communication to the parents about the installation of such a club and giving them an opt-out for their children?
No.
I don't, we haven't really done that before.
No, I think-
Exactly. You've never done that. And as a parent, I can't even imagine opting my kid out of a club they like to be in.
You're not a parent yet, I'm sorry.
I'm not, but if I was-
And honestly, I would, I would opt my child out immediately. And I have a feeling that there will be others-
Why? Why? No, why? Why? Tell me why you'd opt your child out.
And at 12 and 13 years old, I make the decision as to the maturity level and capability of my child to talk about very adult topics. Let's face it.
How is this an adult topic?
When you're talking anything with gender sexuality, it becomes-
Sexual orientation?
It's an adult discussion.
When did you first start liking boys?
It's not appropriate.
When did you first have your first crush?
So I'm gonna, yeah, not quite yet. Mrs. Pavel, you haven't had an opportunity, nothing to say? So I'm going to try and, I'm sympathetic, but I want to kind of clarify a couple of things. So what our standing is, what the school committee can do or not do is approve a student organization. And I think when you are talking about a school that has 5th graders, you're sort of- you're sort of getting into areas where there is parental standing and, um, I mean, there's parental standing up until they're eighteen and then it's, you're on your own. Um, but certainly, parents are gonna have strong feelings about topics of discussion. And it's not that they're not gonna wanna talk about those things, but they're gonna wanna at least have the opportunity to try and guide those discussions. And I recognize that, you know, if, if how Freudian you happen to be, sexuality may start at birth or it's, you know, in the younger childhood or whatever. It's not so much that we're not sexual beings from a very young age. It's really sort of, what is the standing of the parent in trying to help their children through that?
So, can I interrupt?
Yep, sure.
I'm sorry, I'm calling, emotional topic.
It's okay.
Anyway.
It is, and.
Um, sorry, that was loud. Uh, so maybe to send a thing out to the parents, yes. I don't really see a need, but if you'd like to, go for it. It'd open up discussion. So how you said, how if a student wanted to be involved and you sent it home and the parent would opt out to it, and you said you're open to discussion and everything. This would open up a discussion for parents to their students or to their kids.
So let me, let me kinda go back to kinda what I wanted to sort of say. So what you would need from us, if you, if we, if you wanted to start the club, would be the school committee's approval, cause that's what we're supposed to do. What you actually don't need from us is the permission to do this project. What do I mean by that? Um, you need your principal and your faculty advisor and then ultimately, I guess, the superintendent, if there were problems and then it's the superintendent that's answerable to us, but the principal in a way is not. What I would encourage you to do, and I think this is what people might be asking for, is to give us some more information, um, and give us a more concrete plan. Um, and what I would incorporate in your project is some assessment of the community and, and faculty feelings. Sort of, see what, you know, if I was gonna start a gay, gay, straight alliance or, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Gender sexuality.
Gender sexuality club. And I realize this, I recognize this is important, particularly for kids as they're going through adolescence, particularly older adolescents. What is, what are the, what are the, what is the community feeling? And what do we have to do to bring the community in this, in with us on this? I mean, I'm trying, you know, I'm not trying to dictate your project to you, but this is how I would approach it, is first of all, what, what is the community feeling? Um, I think we need to hear from your, um, advisor and, and the principal a little bit more specifically. And then if you could give us a little bit more information exactly, well, what is the club? Is it open to fifth graders? Is it open to sixth graders? Is it open just to seventh or eighth graders or whatever, whatever it is? Sort of a more specific, cause this is what most, so a few weeks ago, we had people trying to establish a middle school soccer team and we made them in a way, I mean, jumped through a few hoops about exactly what were the specifics of this club and how was it going to actually function? Um, so if you could then come to us and say, this is what we're hoping for, I think we could then take it up, you know, very deliberately and decide what's, what's appropriate.
Have, go ahead. Have we not already got that information, though?
I'm not sure we have, actually.
Because, um, I think, I think there was some flexibility in the, um, age group based upon our feedback, which certainly shows maturity. Um, I think there's, uh, uh, there's a advisor, um, there's a time, there's a, if the advisor can't be there, a backup, um, flyers and how they were gonna reach out specifically, you know, very similar to how the high school did it. So I guess I'm not sure what more specifics we'd be looking for.
It's done already?
It's on Lee.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Um, is this the same requirements then that are needed by all the clubs down at the middle school? Like, do they have to have the same protocol? Like, do they, do we, does something go out to the parents when a new club is initiated?
Certainly, there is a plan in place about the club, how it's gonna be paid for, who's participating, um, what the, you know, what the activity actually is. And I think ultimately, we also have to recognize this is somewhat more sensitive than most of the activities you're talking about. But, and, and that's why I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more about what we know about the.
So do you wanna know what their schedule is, what, what they plan to discuss in the meetings, like?
Uh, probably not what they plan to discuss, but what the, you know, what's the, i- i- I mean, I guess that's.
Do you wanna hear about what we do there at the high school? At the high school, a lot of times, it's just nice four walls and it's just them and they don't have to worry about people's comments, um, outside opinion, negative opinion. It's just a nice, safe, positive place to be. We do little things, like we have bake sales, we raise money so that we can buy gifts for a gingerbread kid at Christmas time. Um, we talk about some of the difficulties they do face, that may happen in the hallway, on the bus, outside of school, um, how they can cope with it, where are there places they can go to talk to people who are having a hard time? Sometimes I even talk to them as a parent to remind them how their parents are having difficulty with this. All right, so then they, it's my turn. So how their parents might have difficulty with it and why? So we have nice, frank, open discussions. We don't talk about inappropriate subjects at all, all right? Just, you know, if somebody says, oh, I saw a cute girl and cute boy, just like any other teenager would, it's very innocent and just a nice, positive, safe environment. I think what this is, it's an awkward time in education. Think back, way back, women came to school with men. Oh, people were uncomfortable with that. African-Americans came into school, oh, people were uncomfortable with that. Our students with our disabilities came into the school, they were uncomfortable with that. We're coming through another, another stage. And we're gonna be uncomfortable with it, uh, another generation from now. This conversation is gonna be ridiculous. And they're like, why did we even have this conversation in the first place? Just like we did in the last hundred years about all these other groups. Just want a nice, safe place for these kids. They need it, they're requesting it. The school psychologist down there, she has said that they have a great need for it. Just the kids that come in, my freshmen and sophomores. It was a little teeny tiny group when I took over, all right? And when I came in, all these freshmen came in, they're sophomores now, they're still there, even more freshmen. There's a growing need for it. And they feel, they get a little more confidence when they're there. And I know it's uncomfortable for people. Um, you know, I don't know what I can possibly say to convince you that this is a good thing.
I think the, one of the, it's a, it's a fine balance, as everyone said, but I think it would be helpful for the committee to hear from Dr. Dias Mitchell, from Mrs. Perkins, from the guidance counselors, just regarding the scope of the issue.
Okay.
So the committees, and, and I don't wanna speak for them, cause I don't know how they'll vote, but tha- that's something that might be helpful to just explain what the situation is so it can be better understood. As to what's going on to them, cause you're defining, you're doing a great job of describing what's going on here. But the, the need question, and I, and I'm just kinda giving the feedback that I've heard from the committee and if I'm out of, off base, let me know, is the, what, what is the, what, what's this be? This is coming, the request is from a high school student who had experiences growing up and wants to try to do good at the middle school. But it's not coming from the middle school to the committee. In other words, it's not organic, to use a better word.
Except that I'm hearing that it is.
No, but, but we're not hearing from the principal. We're not hearing from the people who deal with the kids that go through these issues, i.e. guidance, i.e. Mrs. Borden.
Lori approved this, however.
Lori said she's behind it.
Mm-hmm. Edith? Yep.
And I, and again, it's up to the committee, but I don't think, hearing that, maybe it wouldn't help. Maybe it would. Um, but that's what I'm hearing in the conversations from a couple of committee members.
I, um, I'm Mrs. Hallman, I teach seventh grade ELA. Um, a few years ago, I was in charge of a bully club that we used to have. I did a bully walk, maybe six years ago, five or six years ago. Um, so this is a very, this is an extension from that club, is how I feel. Um, when Diane came up to me, she's a former student, I definitely wanted to help. I am definitely a stomp out bullying, I, I'm the one who tries to sell the bracelets and we have this little fund that was stomp out bullying. And I feel this is just an extension of that. I understand that perhaps in a middle school, you may not wanna call it the gender sexuality club. I just spoke to Diane before we came in and I said, maybe for us, for middle school, it should be a gender self-awareness group. Perhaps, I have students who have come to me already this year, brand new territory for me, who have come out to me. Just today, I had a student do that. They need this. Our PEDs, um, from the beginning of the year, mentioned that it is healthy to have kids in middle school have this. We were told in PED, this is the next step we should be considering. Um, I can just tell you from a teacher, it's not just, these kids need a safe place to talk and to know who their alliances are with. It's not just gonna be, as far as I'm concerned, and they will definitely tell me how they were planning on it. I signed up because I figured this was a safe place for kids to be kids that are different. They are there, we just, they're there more than we knew even four years ago. Um, I have a son who is a senior, I have a daughter who's a freshman. She tells me about all the kids in other schools who are in the drama club, who are picking a new identity as far as gender goes. It's there. We just are kinda hiding it, saying, no, it's not. These kids in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, they do need a place to be. We're not gonna talk about sex, we're gonna be talking about how, how can we support you in your decision to flirt with somebody else who might be your same gender? Or have you talked to your parents? How can we help you start that conversation with your parents? That's how I see this. And I'm thinking that's when, we needed the approval before Diane and I could talk about what we wanted. She's young and she doesn't know the sixth, seventh grade lingo and, and how to do that. That was gonna be my position, is to help that. Um, I can just tell you, we do need it. I am seeing kids talking about that they already are one preference over another. And kids wanna support that. And they wanna have a nice, safe place where I'm not, but gosh, my friend isn't, good for them. And I think that's what this club is gonna be. It's, I think we get shy about sexuality and they're just the word when we're dealing with middle school kids. But perhaps if we align it to gender self-awareness and this is a place where you can be aware of whatever gender you wanna be and just be a support group for them. I think that's where the aim is, at least for middle school. And obviously, it would go into the high school different. And I have volunteered to do it and it's an important issue for me. So even when Diane graduates, I would be probably going and asking high school kids to come down and support. But this is an important thing for me, as far as an anti-bully advocate. So I see this as an extension of that. So even when Diane graduates, I will still be at the middle school. And I will still be there to help them, cause I do already. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Lisa Burgess from the high school. I just want to say something very quickly. We see this need so great at the high school and it starts in their freshman year. And I think if they had a place to go before they entered high school, to discuss this, to find their safety net, who they can go to, who they can trust. I can only commend Diana for trying to start this, especially what, how passionate she is about it. And we, we see this need, we deal with this on a daily basis at the high school. And it's not just the upperclassmen, it is, starts with the ninth graders. And if we can get this started in seventh and eighth grade, where they can come to terms with themselves, maybe we'll have less breakdowns here at the high school when they're finally able to join a club like GSA and finally find who their friends are, who their allies are, who they can trust, who they can go to and have a safe place for them. That's it, thank you.
So, we have a motion?
I, I, I guess I just have a couple of the questions. Do we, and I don't know if anyone can speak to them. Do we know if any other districts have, uh, similar organization in this age group? Cause certainly, you know, it doesn't necessarily need, even need to be locally. I'd know, like to know a little bit about what the kind of framework and their experience has been.
I can only speak to what I saw during my PD. I did take the extended PD of this. Um, it is very common in the urban, bigger school systems. Um, I think he was from Johnston, I'm not.
So the Johnston's Providence Warwas type of?
I believe so. The, the gentleman who came and spoke with us, and, um, it was a pair, a gentleman and a, and a woman. Um, I know they were from Rhode Island and I know that they have been advocating for this. Um, I don't have my PD folder to kinda look back. Do you have, do you have the answers?
The gentleman who presented to us is a licensed clinical social worker, um, Mr. J. Watts. So he is a health, mental health professional, licensed professional, works at Thundermist, uh, which has several, uh, healthcare facilities throughout the state and is a counselor and licensed social worker. I don't recall him speaking about any middle school-based clubs in the sessions I attended. Uh, that's certainly something I'd be happy to find out.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
I think he stated he was working with middle schools to start and to start funding. And I'm, I'm pretty sure they were in the urban sections, from what I recall.
So, and I guess I'd like you to think through whether or not it's a good idea to open it to fifth and sixth graders and/or seventh graders, or maybe you've already made your decision about that and, and what, you know.
That's, I'm sorry, but that's a decision the committee needs to make.
No, I know.
For the, for the age group.
I'm, I'm not saying that ultimately, you know, we are the authorizing body for the student organization. What I would like to hear, though, from the principal and the, and the faculty advisor, what they think. Do they think it could be fifth, sixth and seventh or eighth, or just eighth or seventh and eighth or?
I'm honestly, I'm, I don't go much further down in seventh grade, cause my comfort level is seven through twelve. That's where I have a degree. Part of me wants to say I would hate to turn anyone away.
Yep.
Who needs it? Maybe it would, this year being a, a pilot year, we should do seventh and eighth. And then the following year, oh, I, I don't think I'd go below sixth, though, personally.
Mrs. Mitchell has conveyed to me in an email that she thought it was good for seventh and eighth graders.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, if that's what she deems, then that, obviously, we'd follow that.
Um, and I guess, you know, one of the important things we have to do is represent the, the people of the town.
Of course.
Uh, and I think that this will raise a lot of questions for a lot of people. Um, it would be nice, and I guess this is what I was getting at before, uh, I don't know, made her, made her cry, but, um, is that I think a really useful part of this project would actually be a community assessment. And this is not anything that has anything to do with the school committee so much as I think an advisor might want to mentor her into, how would you sort of see what people think of this? Maybe that sounds too complicated. Uh, I think at the very least, we probably need to post this, post another discussion of this.
Okay.
Um, so that parents are aware and have, have their opportunity. Uh, and, and I guess I would like the, um, the faculty advisor to at least avail them and, and Mrs. Dr. Dias Mitchell to, uh, bail herself to, to some questions.
I have a question.
Yeah, yes, Mrs. Pavel.
Um, I guess it would be the more high school. This, she's asking to do this to begin, to start this as part of her senior project.
Correct.
Senior project can't wait for two more months, she has to start, she has to start. It takes a long time for them to get through it. So if we say that she needs to do A, B, and C, when then is she going to actually start her senior project? That's a concern I have.
I, I think this, this, that is the project, is.
But she has to begin. And if we're putting it off, if we don't vote, if we say we want her to go and look into different things, the age groups.
Perhaps this would be something where, um, myself and our psychologist could. Perhaps this would be something where myself and our psychologist could begin the building blocks of this, so that perhaps, if it wasn't until our next meeting, whether you approve or you're... But at least we could get it going, is almost as a mock-up of what it would look like?
This is what I'm gonna...
Excuse me. I certainly wouldn't want to discourage her by what we're... Discussion we're having today. I don't want to see Diana say, "Well, never mind, I'm not gonna do that. I don't wanna do that for my senior project. I'll find something else." This was very important to her.
Correct.
And if I... My concern is... One of my concerns is that, is are we gonna intimidate her? And she's gonna say, "Never mind." This is what she wanted to do. We either have to approve it or not approve it.
Correct. And like I said, I mean, if it's a matter of, we can wait on the meetings.
Yes.
It's fine, and just... I'm just speaking as I volunteered to be the faculty person at the middle school, but if it's something where Diane and I meet as a mocking to get it ready until the next, I can...
You can stop that.
Yeah, I'm speaking for her, which I apologize for doing, but I... At least it starts something, and I'm only here because I volunteered to be that middle school teacher, so...
So what I would like to do is actually ask you to come back.
Okay.
You know, I would like to continue this until our next meeting.
Okay.
I think I would build the project within the framework of, this is where we think the school is. This is where we think the community is. We went to the school committee after thinking through that. That could be the next meeting, it could be the meeting after that. We then tried to establish the club, you know? So I'm, you know, telling you, I'm... And I recognize that's not my role, is to tell you how to do the project, but this is how I would try and approach this body with this issue. And really ask Dr. Diaz-Mitchell and the psychologist to sort of come and talk with this as well.
So just a point of order, Dr. Larkin? We do have a motion on the floor. So if that motion fails, then you can make an emotion to continue.
Well, we could have the motion withdrawn, and we could make a motion to continue, one way or the other.
Diane, how are you?
Hi. Yes. Hi, my name is Joanne Devond. I'm Diana's mom. I tried to get her to come back in, but she's just too upset.
She's there. She's there.
Oh, she did come back in, okay. I know you mentioned you wanted to poll the community. However, having been a resident of this community for quite a while, I don't know where you think that would be a positive thing, 'cause if anybody is monitoring Facebook, you can see some of the comments that are on Facebook are not very nice. But I can say, I'm employed by Citizens Bank, and we started a year ago an initiative called Business Resource Groups, and we started diversity and inclusion for three groups. Women's, Pride, and Prism, because we felt that there was a need in the communities to reach out to these various groups. Prism is our ethnic groups that are underserved, obviously, the not only low income, but the Losing my train of thought here. But Pride, obviously, it definitely falls into the group that Diana is trying to serve here. So there is definitely a community need for that kind of a group. What now, at the lower grade level, I have to say, when Diana first broached the subject to me, I was a bit taken aback, probably because of my age, as you probably were. We're probably all the same era. During one of our recent colleague appreciation weeks, we were trying to expand the membership for our three Business Resource Groups, and I found myself sitting next to the Pride table, and I struck up a conversation with one of the women. And she... I mentioned Diana's senior project, and she goes, "Wow, what a wonderful idea. You would not believe the amount of young children that are struggling in this day and age." And I was shocked to hear it from someone else. And since then, I've also mentioned to various people Diana's project, and to see the number of younger children in elementary and middle school, of friends of mine or acquaintances come out of the woodwork, is fascinating to me. And it... Just to see the number of children struggling with gender identity today is kind of shocking. Now, whether you agree with it or not, the fact is, it's there. And we just have to, you know, embrace it. And while we may not agree with it, it's not our choice to agree or disagree, it's their choice. So we have to accept it, we have to accommodate it, and make it as easy on them as we can. And if this will help them, it's one less struggle that they have to deal with, with all the other stresses they have in their life. So, I mean, it's just something that may help them one hour out of the day in their school. And I think that limiting it to the seventh and eighth graders is probably a good first step. I do think fifth and sixth, it's probably a good idea to not include those at the first year. But, you know, I did struggle when Diana first mentioned it to me, but when I did see the email from the school psychologist, she was definitely on board with this, and said it was definitely needed. And once I saw that, I said, "Okay, then my misgivings aside, go for it. As long as the school psychologist said that there is a need for it, I am 100% behind you." So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I agree with you. I'm certainly very sympathetic to the idea. And I recognize that there may be quite a bit of misgiving on the part of people for something like this, but I think it's still incumbent upon us to at least ask the question. And I can imagine doing that in different ways. It may be as simple as making sure that there is at least an opportunity, a well-posted meeting, whatever that means, so that people are aware and have an opportunity to voice their views. And maybe we vote to approve this regardless of that. You know, our job is to make the best decision for the district and for the children of the district. But we're not charged just with their education, but with their care and protection, and certainly with respecting the rights of families and sort of how they deal with certain of these types of issues. So we have a motion on the floor. If... My preference would be to continue this until the next meeting, and have an opportunity for the psychologist and for the principal to speak with us, and then maybe a little bit more of a clearer plan of the age group, and if there's other information from other districts that could inform our decision a lot of it. But Mrs. Black, it's your motion to withdraw if you would choose, or is it...
Yes, my motion.
It's Mrs. Pavo's motion, excuse me. Care to withdraw?
No.
Okay.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
So, it's posted. I see it posted here, duly posted. We did this before on the high school level. You know, we did what we thought was right. The kids had a need, we kept them safe. We're hearing tonight that the psychologist is for it. The principal said, "Yes, I also agree. We should amend the motion to seventh and eighth grade to start with, and see how it goes." Kids can't wait. We keep saying, "Let's see what other people do." I don't care what other people do. I care what we do in Tivitan, as long as it's legal. Nothing inappropriate's gonna happen there. That's what everybody was afraid before, when we started the high school one. I saw them in front of the college fair, they were so happy, everybody was hugging each other. This school is known for one thing, especially for being so accepting of every student that comes through the door. I don't say walks through, 'cause they might be in a wheelchair. No matter who comes in here, it's our job to embrace them, to let them know it's okay. You know, Name It, Claim It, Stop It was a huge success. We got national recognition for that, for our bullying. And this goes along with that, as they said. This is all intertwined. These kids need all our support and wraparound services, and if we can save one child or two and get them through this, this is amazing opportunity. I thank you so much for bringing this forward. And I know it's controversial, and we'll answer the questions, and nothing... I don't think anything bad will happen. Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing. First of all, Diane, I do mean this from the bottom of my heart. I do commend you for getting up here in front of us tonight and presenting this. And I am in complete awe of the club that's at the high school today. There's no problem there whatsoever. Again, my concern is over the age group that we're talking about. I would feel more comfortable if I knew that the school psychologist was more actively involved in the club itself, truthfully. And I would... Of course, I agree with the seventh and eighth grade thing, most certainly. And I really would like an opportunity for the parents of all students of middle school children to be fully aware of this before it starts up, at the very least, so that they can have the opportunity to talk with their own children and make their own decisions.
So I believe, Mrs. Black, you made a motion...
I made a motion.
No, but Mrs. Black then made a motion to amend your motion.
I'm going to amend my...
You're gonna...
I'd like to amend my motion to have the club include seventh and eighth grade only for this year.
Okay, and is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, so let's vote on the amendment to the first motion. All those in favor, or any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to the primary motion? Okay, so now there is a motion on the floor, which is to approve the club for seventh and eighth graders. Any other discussion on that motion? So I am gonna say I'm willing to vote in favor of that motion, but I would like the school psychologist and the principal to come to our next meeting, to have it posted as a issue for, I guess, old business, so that we can get any other parental input that may be out there, that they wanna give. And if you could give us some information about other districts, and what their experience has been?
That whole packet is actually about every district, well, a lot of districts that benefit from GSA's.
Okay. I didn't get the packet.
It's been passed through.
Yeah, the handout that they just... Okay.
Fifty percent of its bar graphs on the second page, I think, about different reasons that have the benefit from GSA's.
Okay.
I don't have anything that's about Rhode Island.
I'm sorry?
I don't have anything that's about Rhode Island specifically, but I can only be playing for an SBA.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to know, like, if there are other districts in Rhode Island, that they're more likely to be accessible to us about their experience, particularly at this age group. And hopefully, that's part of the learning process of your project. Sometimes they're not so hard, or easy. So any other discussion of the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve? Okay. So, it's approved. Thank you. So we are... Yep, Mr. Riddick.
Just for clarification, so for our next meeting is November 14th. Am I to place this item under old business? No, it's November 14th, because of the way the calendar is. Do you want me to place it... Are we still gonna be discussing this under old business?
Yes, please, and ask Mrs. Dr. Diaz-Mitchell and the psychologist.
What's the agenda item gonna be, since we're not taking action on anything? Just this continued discussion of the club?
Yeah.
Because you already approved the club with the vote.
Right, right.
So what's the agenda?
That's what I'm...
I'd like to hear more from the principal and from the faculty advisor, what their plans are.
So, we're not actually gonna be taking any action? We've already approved it, you just want...
More information.
Yeah, I wanna have the opportunity to ask questions of them, and ask them to make a presentation of what their vision of their project is, for the club is.
Or the purpose of potentially redoing the vote? I'm just trying to...
No, for the purpose of gaining more information.
Right, but we already approved it, and I don't mean to be difficult, but, I mean, we have a lot of business ahead of us, and we already approved this club, so I'm just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page, all five of us, on what exactly we want.
I would like to give an opportunity for other parents to voice their feelings or opinions about it, and also to hear from the principal and from the school psychologist, more specifically from them. There's been a lot of things attributed to them, and I don't doubt the veracity of that, but I would like to hear from them specifically what their vision of the club is.
Dr. Larkin, are you saying that you would like to allow parents to speak at the next meeting on this subject?
Well, it will be an item of open business, and usually we do allow public...
But it can't alter the vote we just took.
No, I'm not saying it is gonna alter the vote, no.
No, I'm just asking.
No.
I don't...
The only way we'd alter the vote is if we made a motion to alter the vote, and then we voted to alter the... No? Okay?
I just need your action, that's all I'm asking. I didn't mean to...
No, the next meeting, and you want...
I just...
You want the principal?
I would like the principal of the building where the activity is going to occur, who is not here tonight, to come and address us specifically about this activity.
As well as Mrs. Perkins?
As well as Mrs. Perkins, who is the faculty advisor, who is also not here tonight.
And I would certainly welcome Diana back if she comes up with any additional research that she would care to share with us as well.
Okay. Item 7A, update on town charter review commission. Mrs. Black, did you wanna speak to that?
Yes, I've been attending all the charter review meetings, and we discussed this before. A lot of people, it's putting in different things, and I think we should wait till they kind of consolidate them, and then we'll give them to our lawyers to look at, because everyone's just submitting theirs. And we did go, if you'd like to talk about it, Dr. Larkin, to present to them the other night, a school committee. You and Diane and I went.
Do we know when roughly they're gonna have their choices narrowed down? Did they talk about that?
No, they have to see everybody first, the town council and everybody.
They said they'd like the ideas fully submitted by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then they'll go through everything.
So then, once they... So you're thinking, Sally, once they finalize, then we can move past them on to Stephen and Vicky?
Right. He can look at them, the ones they're going to try to put forward, 'cause there's so many, we wouldn't wanna do that now.
All right.
Yeah. But I'll still continue to go to all the meetings and report out to you. Do you wanna talk about when we went, Dr. Larkin?
Not really. So, sure. We presented the proposals that we had discussed previously in our meetings, primarily centered around the budget process, the calendar that has to be followed, the issues about access to the ballot, and the ambiguities in the charter. And then, I'm gonna get the number wrong, the 1118, 1218?
1218.
1199, 1218. How that really actually probably was not, I don't know, constitutional, I guess. I think those were the main highlights.
Yes, we asked them to change the word labor in that, so that we could go out and...
It was a cordial and, I thought...
Yeah, it was.
Constructive conversation. I'm not sure if we changed any minds about anybody, but...
We talked about the public hearing at the end not being really a public hearing, 'cause you can't change anything. You know, that meeting they have at the very end, when the docket's already been printed, someone could come out with the best idea in the world, and it wouldn't matter, because everything's finalized. So to move that earlier, at least to give people a chance to offer a situation that can be changed. And we also talked about, of course, the optional budget, and if it has to be the same as the final budget, then they have to put, shall be the same as the final budget. And if it has to be the same as the final budget, then they have to put, shall be the same as the final budget. You can't let people think you have another chance to put a budget in. You know, we talked about that. So they were very, it was very nice back and forth, respectful, I thought. So I will continue to go and report out to you.
Thank you, Wee. Appreciate your sacrifice and your service. Okay, new business application of policy nine eighty-one recruitment, advertising, and hiring policy. As many of you may recall, we decided to put this on the agenda, discuss how this policy is followed. So this is a discussion about how the district has followed the policy, and it should help inform the review by the policy subcommittee, because the policy has actually already been referred to them to review it, and then bring us back any recommended changes. How I would like to proceed in this discussion is actually to start by reading the policy, which shouldn't take me more than four minutes. I've already done it, and it timed it. And the reason for that, really, I think, is important to have the words heard by everyone in the same place at the same time, so that we are both familiar with it and can hear the things that maybe we haven't heard before. Then I'm going to ask Mr. Rurik to review how the district follows the policy, and then for comments from the school committee members, then comments from the public. I need to caution everyone that we need to be very careful in not discussing any specifics of the candidates for any position on whom this policy has been, or any search in which this policy has been used. This is just a discussion of how the district has followed or not followed the policy. If any school committee members at this point would like to proceed in any other fashion than what I've just outlined, then feel free to call a point of order, and we can have an open discussion about how we will proceed at this point. So hearing none, I will read the policy. This is recruitment, advertisement, and hiring policy and practices for Tiverton School District administrators and faculty. If anybody would like to set a clock, you can let me know how I do. The Tiverton School Department is an affirmative action, equal opportunity employer, and is committed to providing equal opportunity to all candidates for employment. The Tiverton School Committee and District shall make every effort to ensure that individuals hired are highly qualified, as defined by the Rhode Island Department of Education. In accordance with Rhode Island General Law sixteen sixteen twenty-four, a highly qualified candidate who is a non-retiree shall be given preference over a highly qualified candidate who is a retiree of the Rhode Island Teachers Retirement System. The Board will appoint employees only from nominations made by the superintendent to fill positions created by the Board or vacated by an incumbent. The superintendent shall recruit candidates for employment from as wide a selection of training institutes and sections of the country as possible, and as appropriate to the position being filled. The Board authorizes the administration and their conduct of pre-employment evaluations to administer appropriate tests bearing directly upon a candidate's ability to perform the task for which he or she is being considered. Should a nominee be rejected by the Board, it shall be the duty of the superintendent to reopen the position for advertisement and consider any highly qualified applicant who may apply during the period of re-advertising, which could include the applicant that was originally rejected. The Board shall not be responsible for any verbal, financial promises, conjectures, or surmises made by an administrator in the hiring of an employee. All such conditions must be set down in writing in an employee's contract and approved on motion by the Board before they become binding upon the Board. Following items shall apply with regard to the selection process for employment. Positions which are eligible to be bid within the various collective bargaining units shall be posted on the district's website. Sorry, that was number one. Number two, at the conclusion of the posting process, the position shall be advertised with at least one web-based employment company. The administration may advertise in additional media outlets where the uniqueness of the position so warrants. Based on the job description certification required, the job bank shall be searched, and all active employment applications shall be reviewed, and those applicants meeting the criteria shall be notified and requested to submit a current application if interested. Active applications shall be defined as not more than two years on file. In addition, part-time and substitute employees are encouraged to apply for available positions. All applicants must submit the same materials. Number four, the superintendent or designee shall first review the current applications and schedule interviews for those meeting the appropriate certification, qualifications, et cetera. Number five, initial screening of all applicants, including, one, the determination that specific job qualifications have been met; two, verification of references; three, the obtaining of necessary resumes; and four, the initial interviewing of applicants shall be the responsibility of the superintendent and/or his or her designee. Applications from candidates who are retirees of the Rhode Island Teachers Retirement System shall be held in abeyance until such time that the superintendent has determined he or she has made a good faith effort to find a highly qualified candidate who is not a retiree. Number six, should the superintendent determine it to be necessary, he or she may constitute an interview committee for the purpose of interviewing finalists and making recommendations to the superintendent for his or her consideration. This committee shall be only advisory in nature to the superintendent. Subsection A, the superintendent shall provide an opportunity for the following parties to be involved in this interview committee: administrators, supervisors, school, faculty, support staff, union representatives, parents, students, and other consultants, as appropriate. Subsection B, the superintendent or his or her designee shall serve as the chairperson of the interview committee. Subsection C, the interview committee should be comprised as follows: elementary level, building principal, one grade level teacher, one regular education teacher from a different grade level, one special education teacher and/or remedial teacher, and one parent; middle school level, building principal, assistant principal, two members of the grade level team, one special education teacher and/or remedial teacher, and one parent; one student, depending on job vacancy, i.e., building principal, assistant principal, band director; high school level, building principal, assistant principal, two members from the applicable department, one special education teacher, one parent, and one student, depending on job vacancy, i.e., building principal, assistant principal, and band director. The school committee recognizes that the availability for the prescribed number of teachers and parents to serve on interview committees may be limited. Therefore, if the prescribed number of representatives cannot be met, the building principal will be responsible for adjusting the number of participants on the interview committee. The school committee also understands the need may arise where specific expertise is needed during the interview process, i.e., world language department head may be invited to participate on an interview committee for a middle school world language teaching position, or the curriculum director may be asked to participate to measure a potential candidate's background working on a Title I school. Subsection D, the interview committee shall offer interviews to each of the candidates put forth by the superintendent. Subsection C, the chairperson of the interview committee shall ensure that interview questions appropriate for the position being filled are developed and asked of each candidate interviewed by this committee. The chairperson may solicit suggestions and/or questions from the interview committee, but the superintendent and the chairperson shall determine the final list of questions to ensure that they are in compliance with the generally accepted personnel practices and applicable state and federal statutes. Appendix number one of this policy has sample questions that are appropriate and can be asked during the interview process. Appendix number two of this policy contains examples of frequent interview errors. The contents of both appendices will be reviewed by each interview committee prior to the start of interviewing potential candidates. Number seven, the superintendent shall develop any forms necessary to implement this policy and submit such forms to the school committee for approval. Subsection A, the interview committee shall forward their recommendations to the superintendent in order of preference. Subsection B, if an interview committee is used by the superintendent, he or she shall review the recommendations provided to him or her prior to finalizing his or her priorities and recommendations. Subsection C, the superintendent of schools reserves the right to interview any of the three finalists that are forwarded to the interview committee. Number eight, the superintendent shall recommend his or her top candidate to the school committee for their consideration. Accompanying this shall be a summary of the process used in the folders of the top three candidates in order of priority, as determined by the interview committee and superintendent. The superintendent shall also provide a listing of all those applicants that met the advertised posted qualifications and certification, et cetera. Subsection A, the written recommendation from the superintendent to the school committee shall include the following: effective date of hire, first day to report for employment, the existence of any special conditions, the starting salary, the length of term of employment, completion of necessary or required background checks, contract for employment only for long-term substitutes in accordance with the Board of Regents' regulations, and any other matters of which the Board shall be aware. Subsection B, at the meeting during which the superintendent's recommendation is made, the school committee shall vote to affirm or deny the recommendation of the superintendent. In the event that the superintendent's recommendation is denied, the superintendent shall re-advertise and conduct the hiring process again. Subsection C, acknowledgement letters will be sent to all finalists. And that is the policy. Mr. Rurik?
Yes, the policy gets implemented, and just going back, and I know folks don't have the policy in front of them, but sections one, two, I want to go to section three. We don't use a job bank anymore. There's no, we used to have one years ago, and that was a compilation of people who applied for all the various jobs, and it's just something that we got away from over time. So we don't refer to a job bank anymore. We don't look for them, we don't go to one. Number four is really where most, for teachers, the process occurs. I ask the principals to form a selection team or review team, I should call it, a screening committee, to screen all the applicants for a given position in their building. They have parents, they have teachers on it, and they then interview the candidates. And for teaching candidates, they then submit to me, usually just a candidate, that is, they come to consensus on somebody that they want. So I then put, I go through the packet when I get it, all the backup documents, then I present it to the school committee for approval. For building administrators, I do the same, follow the same process. Or for when we hired Mrs. Donley Rose for curriculum director, we created a committee of principals, or a principal, depending whether it's a building-level position or a district position. We would put administrators on there, and teachers, and parents, if appropriate. And they then screen the candidates for me. Then I get the recommendations. I ask for them to send me whoever they feel they think is appropriate, or that they screen and say, we like this candidate, look at them. So they then send me the names. I then do the interviews myself for the building-level administrators, or I'll have the assistant superintendent sit in with me. I've also had the director of finance sit in with me on different interviews. I then go through their backgrounds. We do background checks. And of course, you know, when we do the interviews, we weigh very heavily, you know, what they have to say to us. We then look at how that person, that administrator, would fit into what we're trying to accomplish as a district. And then I make a final decision and make a recommendation to the committee. So it's really kind of two processes that we follow. One is for hiring of teachers and TAs. And then there's another where I take a more active role when I'm hiring a member of the administrative team. I do not, you know, we follow number five. We verify all the references, whether it's a teacher, non-certified, or administrator, administrative-level position. I have never formed, and I shouldn't say I never, because my memory's not what it used to be, but I don't recall ever having an interview committee as prescribed under the policy.
Meaning one teacher, one student.
Number six, in other words, what we do is we use pieces of this, of the interview committee. For example, at the elementary level, when they're doing interviews for teachers, they take that, they use that part of it in what I would consider section four. We don't, I don't say to the principals, conduct an interview. They do a screen, then they interview the candidates, they then send the names back to me. I don't then set up another committee, called an interview committee, to do the process a second time. We, that, it's incongruent, what's written versus what we actually follow, or how we proceed with our.
So you interview the finalists yourself?
For administrative positions, yes. And I have interviewed teaching candidates, especially if there's more than one, where the screening committee at a building level say, we got two really good people. We can't decide, then I would interview whoever they sent to me at that case, at that level.
Anyone else on the committee? Mrs. Black?
Yes, the reason I brought this up at the other meeting, not last one, because we didn't bring it up again in the first meeting, was because we had a letter from the superintendent, and this isn't about any certain one, it's happened before. It says, as the school committee is aware, some high school teachers have raised questions regarding the selection process. Now, that's what we got in our packet. We had gotten emails, all of us, so it raises a concern. So if that selection committee, you know, we heard from Mrs. Mullin before, just in general, of a letter from Ms. Cartel, you know, three parents, six school people and everything. So I think they thought they were probably a committee. It says to send three names in order of priority to you. We know you're the final say. And then if we don't agree with what you say, then we have to start it all over again. That's how I've always thought it was done, and that's what it says in there. And that's the process I thought the people in the high school thought they were following. So we just, that's the only reason I brought it up, was because when we get emails and phone calls, we have to address them, and you addressed it right in the packet. You said there were questions and concerns from the high school teachers. I have the letter in my packet. That's the reason I thought I could speak of it, because it was on the agenda in my packet. I don't speak out of turn, thank you very much.
We don't have that in tonight's packet. I'm trying, I honestly don't remember that.
Well, we had it in the packet that I talked about. I can show it to you after I quoted from it right here, a letter from Mr. Rurik, and that's what it says. It says that the school committee is aware.
We're talking about.
In the night, two meetings ago.
Talking about the interview process.
I honestly don't remember it, Sally.
No, that was my cover memo.
That was his cover memo in the packet that night.
Okay.
And that's how he introduced the whole process of selection. He said in his letter, there was a problem put forward to him from the high school teachers.
And as I say, concerns.
Well, concern, it says, as the school community is aware, some high school teachers have raised questions regarding the selection process.
We have to talk about the policy specifically.
Well, that's what it is, the selection process is the policy.
So what specifically, because the subcommittee, at least Dr. Larkin, two meetings ago, referred this to the subcommittee, and we've met at least once. And we did look at the concerns that were forwarded to us, and my response to that person at the time was, you're misreading the policy. And I still believe they're misreading the policy. And when we looked at it, we believe they're misreading the policy, that somehow this interview committee for the finalist, which is the only interview committee that's discussed in the policy, has sort of morphed into any committee. And I think that's where the misreading is, that the only place that any committee is discussed is in six and seven, and it's clear. It says, should the superintendent determine it to be necessary, he or she may constitute an interview committee for interviewing finalists. So if you're screening, however they screen, and he gets the finalist, at that point, he can constitute an interview committee. And I don't remember in the seven years I've been on that you've ever done that, but you certainly can via policy. But I think that's where the confusion comes in, is.
So when, yeah.
Is what the interview committee is, and, you know, six and seven, at least the policy committee felt pretty comfortable and certain that, you know, it's referring to when a superintendent constitutes an interview committee for the purpose of interviewing the finalists of the screen, of the screen names that come up. I will say that we do agree that it's lengthy, and it deserves to be shortened and simplified. I, you know, the policy in general, so.
I.
But as far as the, but as far as whether the policy was followed. But as far as the, but, but as far as whether the policy was followed, again, as I replied to the person who, who wrote us the email, I, I believe there was just a misinterpretation of the policy.
I, I think I would ask the committee, and not I think, I would ask the committee to consider giving direction to the policy subcommittee, and I know some districts do have this, and we could do some more research on it, that we create two hiring policies, or selection, or whatever you want to call it. One for, for teaching and non-certified staff would be one, and then have a second one for administration, or hiring administrative administrators, and I think we had, and you could even go, and I think we talked about it briefly, but I wouldn't recommend it, but you could even have one in the, for superintendent, you guys will be doing that de facto anyway. But I, I would ask the committee to consider to have, to think about having, create two policies, one for certified and non-certified staff, and then for assistant principal on up, and have two distinct policies, and that way you don't, it's, again, it's just a recommendation. Or you could tell us to just go back and, you know, try to shorten this up.
No, I, I like the idea of two policies. I mean, we can bring it forward, and if people don't like it, but, but as far as this agenda item, like I said, we just think it was a misreading of the policy.
Okay. Ms. Carter?
I was actually writing down some notes, and I have, you know, that either we would be creating separate policies, or revising one policy that clearly addresses faculty and staff versus administration versus superintendent. We could incorporate the three topics in one policy, as long as they're clearly laid out.
Okay. Ms. Papo? Nothing? Ms. Black, anything else?
So, so actually then, all these pages, there were ten or eleven pages, and we don't even need, which is one page or a paragraph, if the superintendent and the assistant superintendent are going to disregard everything that happened with parents and teachers, and nine and 10 hours of, you know, this, then we just have to say the superintendent and assistant superintendent will bring forward.
Well, I think it's pretty clear-
But I do agree, I do agree we should have-
That's really though, Sally, that's not fair, that's a mischaracterization of, I think, the process that they go through and that we go through. I mean, I think we have to be really careful that we don't equate a difference of opinion with disrespect, because they're not the same thing.
No, but I think it's-
Just because Bill, or any superintendent, and it doesn't even be him, or any one of us comes up with a different recommendation, or a different direction, it doesn't mean we disrespect the people that are putting in the time and effort, because it is a process, and, and that part of it is very valuable, but we all sort of go through our own process. Superintendent's going to have information we don't have, because he checks references, you know, he calls and actually talks to people. We go through our own processes, and, and there have been numerous times where we've pulled things off the agenda to discuss them, because we wanted to share things we had found. So I, I think we just need to be really careful that we don't get into mischaracterizing a difference of opinion with disrespect for the effort that's being made at that level, because I don't think that's true.
No, and I do agree, there should be two levels, once we do this policy, definitely, with the administration and teachers.
Okay. Anything else?
So, just one second, so just to answer your point, Sally, I think it is pretty clear that it says this committee shall be only advisory to the superintendent. I think it's also, also clear in the policy that the, the committee only exists at the discretion or the decision by the superintendent or his designee. Although it's not explicit in the policy, it sort of follows from that, that yes, in fact, the superintendent, or who makes the final decision to make the recommendation to us, may have many other things that they take into account, and, and can very clearly make a different decision. And there's one other, that was, that was, I guess, pretty much the whole point, so.
I just, before-
Well, if you think of it, you can come back to it, Jared.
I just want to be clear, and some, again, maybe I wasn't clear in my response. When we're hiring teachers and teacher assistants, I defer 99.9% to what I get back from my principal, from whatever building, for whatever position, unless there's something that I find out about, or see that I have questions about, I, I respect their input, to the point where I review it, and then I forward it to the school committee. For, for, when I'm hiring a member of my administrative team, I take a more active role, and I have to, because of the responsibility that these people have, the goals that we have as a school, as a school department. Also, my questions are maybe more focused on something that I think the building needs, or a school needs, and what those answers are back to me. And even then, you get people who are good interviewers, then you have to do the reference checks, do they check out? Now with social media, you do social media backgrounds. I take all that into account, and I interview the names that come forward. Now, a principal can say to me, Bill, I would like to add somebody to the list. I'll say, your building, I'll defer to you, include them into the list. I interview everybody whose names get sent forward to me for building level positions or higher. I don't just say, well, I'm not going to look at them, and I take issue with the fact that I just, that, that the comment's been made, that I disregard the input of our staff. My behavior and actions over the last 14 years have said just the opposite. And because I disagree, or my decision disagrees with what some people want, I'm sorry, but that's my job as superintendent, is to recommend to the committee the best candidate. And that's what I've done for the last 14 years. Thanks.
So, I did sort of remember what I was going to say. So, again, it's clearly an advisory role, and the, the committee only really exists at the preference of the superintendent. And then finally, one of the things I noticed about the policy as I was reading through it, you know, for the fifth or sixth time, was it's very prescriptive in terms of what the committee is supposed to do, but it's, actually doesn't govern what the superintendent does. It's sort of implied, but not really explicit, and I think maybe that's intentional, that, you know, the, the committee may, you know, after its consideration, put forward three names. I don't think this policy in any way precludes the superintendent, or their designee, from adding to that list, or not using those three names at all. The, it is, it is not, there is not a positive obligation on the part of the superintendent, at least as the policy is written, to use those three names. They may say, those are not the, the three I want. I, I think that there are three other candidates whose names came across my desk, and, and that you guys looked at, who I believe is the superior candidate. Again, hopefully, you know, informed by the perspective they have based on other things, their own interview, the references, the CV, and, and really, they probably have the best global picture of the district about where they need strengths, and where they can accept weaknesses on, on the part of any candidate. So.
Is it my turn, finally?
It's your time, sorry.
I've been waiting two weeks.
Well, I, I said I needed to let the committee speak.
I do have one other point, but I'll defer to Lynn.
All right, go ahead. Fire away.
I think, I'm going to ask my question that I wanted to ask two weeks ago, at this point, and we know we are talking about policy, which is really good, because I think, and there have been a couple of issues that we've been dealing with in the last couple of weeks regarding policy, and I think they all need to be looked at, and-
Sure.
A lot of them need to be revised. But my question was last week, is if there is a concern brought to a school committee member, weeks, probably a month or so ago, why is it just being addressed now? If there is a concern about this policy and how things were followed, why after the appointment of the vice principal is this being talked about now? That's just a question out there.
So the proper procedure should have been, if any one of us has a question about an appointment, you need to let the superintendent know before the, before the agenda's published, so that we can have an executive session? Because you will be discussing, in addition to, not just the policy, you, you very quickly delve into the person. So that has to be done in an executive session, and we have done that in an executive session before. So I guess, hindsight's 20-20, I guess it would have been incumbent on Mrs. Black to ask for an executive session.
My answer to the question is, when you are proceeding with the search under a flawed policy, and you realize the policy is flawed, what do you do then? Do you suspend the search, and then go rewrite the policy? Perhaps. I think the district would be more harmed than, than it would benefit from stopping-
But the policy is, it wasn't flawed, it's just, we want it changed. I mean, the policy was followed.
I mean, there were certain, there were certain parts of that policy, I don't know what, like, the makeup, the makeup of the committee. Well, it wasn't verbatim.
When, when would you, sort of say, stop everything, and rewrite the policy, in my view? And again, I'm just speaking for myself at this point, would be if you thought that there was going to be a material difference in the result. And I think, again, the fact that the committee, if the issue is about the committee and its formulation, its recommendations, and, and other things, again, because the committee only exists at the-
Advisory.
-preference of the superintendent, and is purely advisory, and what the superintendent then does with the recommendations is not specified in the policy, I, I don't see that there would have been a material difference. That would be my answer.
Well, I think, I think there, there are gaps there, and I'm not sure it was made clear to the committee. I mean, I, I've done it before, so I kind of knew what my role was, but I think some people, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but there are concerns with some people here at the high school, and some that were on the, the committee, that when we, and I'm just trying to be really careful with what I say.
Yeah, you have to be very careful.
And it's almost impossible to talk about it without, you know, there was certain, a number of candidates brought forward, and there were several others interviewed, and I know the superintendent can do that, and, and what happens when it goes from the committee to the superintendent, we don't know what happens from point A to point B.
Right.
What Mr. Ashley's conversations are with the superintendent.
Right.
So what Bill just said is helpful of what, as, as far as, you know, what's brought to him, he makes a decision on. But I think the concern with people on the committee, and other committees that they've sat on in the past, that they are feeling that they are, their opinion doesn't matter, that they're putting a lot of time in, and they know the building, they know the personnel, like, I've been in the system for 33 years, as people have been in the system for a long time, we know the kids, we know the building, and we think that we have a lot to offer as far as who might compliment Mr. Ashley, you know, what, who could, can relate to our kids. And I think people really take it seriously when they're on a committee. I know people that I work with take it very seriously, they put a lot of hours in, and I think they feel that in the past, you know, couple of years maybe, that they're not being heard, and to the point where they don't really want to volunteer to do it anymore. And that's kind of sad, because our community here at the high school has been very, is very, very tight, and they work hard to, you know, kind of make this a good place, you know, I just, I, I'm just saying that because this is what I hear. I, I don't, to be honest with you, you can do what you want with the policy, it's water under the bridge at this point, but I think people feeling that they are not being heard, and their time is being wasted, is not a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a question for me?
No, just a comment.
It's, just one, one comment you made about, outside of this particular exercise that we just went through. I've only been on the school committee just under a year, but I have been involved with the school system for 13 years now. And I've served in voluntary roles throughout, and that includes several screening committees for the hiring of principals. I can tell you that in each case, that things were not always handled the same, or verbatim to this policy. I can tell you that in some cases, we put forth two candidates, three candidates, and even no candidates. And what happened, and we never, never, and that includes the most recent committees, we never ranked our preference as a screening committee. When Mr. Rierich received the recommendations from the steering committee, they were equally placed, and it was left to him to perform the next round of interviews, and decide how he was going to proceed. So if the fact that there is reference to past committees not listening, or whose voices were not heard, I take issue with that, because I've served on those committees, and that is not true.
I'm not speaking for everybody on all the committees, and I'm not saying their voices aren't being heard, I just don't think that-
I think the process has always been well-run.
Maybe the ones you've been on, but as far as that, as far as that policy, it does say to rank them.
It may. Well, the superintendent's interview committee, which we've never had, it says to rank them.
So there's, there's major issues with that policy. I'm, I'm just, I'm just sharing, I'm just sharing what I'm hearing here from, from people that I've been on a committee with, I've never been on a committee with you. I'm just talking about the, the people that have, I've spent time working with, and on committees with. This is what the feeling is right now. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just telling you that's how people feel.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
By the way, I did share my concerns with Mr. Rierich, I always do, I don't play butcher, I'm not going to come in public and say something that I haven't already shared with him. So I called him on a Sunday morning, way before, because I know it's too late, after this whole process is gone through, you can't talk about it then. And so we'll just move along and fix the policy, and, and not run the school.
The best we can do, all right.
I, I just have one more thing. Dr. Larkin, unless you have something?
Nope.
Just quickly, because there, there was a little bit of confusion about this, is that policy does not give the superintendent authority to make the hiring decisions, it's actually the general assembly and state law. State law says superintendents have administrative responsibility for the school system, and appoint all school department personnel with the consent of the school committee. I think people get confused, and they think policy, and they think the school committee gives the superintendent all his power, we in fact, him or her, we in fact do not. A lot of the superintendent authority comes from not only the general assembly, but the Rhode Island Department of Education, and state law is very clear that the superintendent appoints all school department personnel. The last point I want to make is, with that authority comes the accountability. I'm not going to look to, if, if, if we have a recommendation and it doesn't pan out, I'm not going to go to my packet and say, who was on that hiring committee? I'm going to be looking at whoever's sitting in that chair. So with that authority comes the accountability, and that's who I'm going to be holding accountable for those decisions. So I, I do agree with Lynn, though, I think it's wordy, it's confusing, and, and we definitely need to work on this policy, and I like the suggestion of having two separate ones. Superintendent Rierich.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, item 8D, monthly financial reports.
Yes, Mr. Fiore.
Something really interesting.
Well, I'll, I'll do my best, I know Deb and Diane enjoy these. The first document you have is a, a report on our OPEB funding program that we have, and as of June 30th, 2017, we have $269,277.47, and these dollars are to help to pay for post-retiree benefits that may arise. And again, the committee has access to these funds, and you can withdraw them for whatever reason at any time, if you so chose, but this is just an update regarding, regarding that. The second document is the year-to-date, the monthly report that you're familiar with, and I'll try to answer any questions, if you have any on that. And the third document is a, it's kind of a good news document, if it holds. This is preliminary funding information from the Department of Education, and you can see, originally, they sent us something over the summer saying we were-
And you can see, originally, they sent us something over the summer, saying we were going to be level funded for the next three or four years. And, and at least in preliminary calculations, they're saying that we might get an additional $300,000, just over $300,000. So hopefully, that will, that will stay, and we'll probably know more in the next month or so, as we begin the development of the 2019 budget. And that's the three financial documents.
All right. Item, item eight E, referral of policy 1165 harassment to policy subcommittee for review. Mrs. Black had requested this, recognizing that we are just as glamorous as Hollywood, and sort of stories in the news, that we just asked the policy committee to look that over.
And she did give me-
Represented your views.
And I thank her for that. She did give me a copy of not only the policy, but there's procedures that go along with it, that, that aren't. So I, I do have them all, and I'll make-
It's 13 pages, I believe.
Uh, yeah. Yes.
So, you know, as Dr. Larkin said, with everything that's going on, and the article in the Newport paper today, "Education on harassment is necessary." When all this is happening, people are saying to me, "Do you have a policy?" I said, "Yes, we do. Want to make sure it's reviewed, and it's not always caused sexual harassment, any kind of harassment at all is not tolerated, and of course, in our schools." So that's why I want the ladies to look over it and come back, and kind of blend those two together, because the procedure's really nice, but, but it's just outdated, the names on it.
And see if we can't maybe shorten it, get them together.
Who to go through, who to report it to, stuff like that. So everybody will be comfortable knowing there's someplace to turn. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any announcements? Okay. I'm going to entertain a motion under Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, legal advice litigation charter complaint. Rhode Island General Law 46, 42465A2, legal advice litigation ride decision. Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, legal advice director of finance and administration employment contract. Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, litigation legal advice teacher termination decision from ride. Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, session pertaining to collective bargaining NEA Tiverton. Can I have such a motion?
So move.